Welcome to this Planning Commission meeting. Please remember to turn off your cell phones. The machine for the Garage Under City Hall is located at the right of the chambers. The purpose of this Planning Commission study session is the presentation of the 2024 General Plan Annual Performance Review Report. We'll now start with roll call. Vice Chair Cantrell. Commissioner Berossia.
Here.
Commissioner Bendol.
Here.
Commissioner Bickford. Commissioner Lardinois.
Here.
Commissioner Oliveria. Commissioner Rosario.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Myself here, that's six, so we have quorum. Alright, we will now call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. First up on the agenda this evening is public comment for non-agendized items. Do we have any members of the public in attendance who would like to provide public comment? If so, you can come forward. Okay, in that case, I will turn it over to staff for our study session presentation on the 2024 General Plan Annual Performance Review Report. Thank you.
Thank you Chair and Commissioners. Good evening, my name is Laura Mauer, Planner on the General Plan Team. And I am joined today by David Fong, also Planner on the General Plan Team, who will also be presenting with me today. In addition, we have Rebecca Ross, Supervising Planner in the PRNS Department, as well as Michelle Flores, Supervising Planner on the Housing Team in the Planning Division, who will be here later, available for questions after the presentation. We also want to acknowledge and express our appreciation to all the departments that assisted in providing information for this report. In addition to PRNS and the Housing Team in the Planning Division, we had assistance from the Department of Transportation, the Environmental Services Department, and the Office of Economic Development, as well as from other teams on, in the Planning Division. We ask that you please leave questions till the end of the presentation. Slide numbers are provided on each slide for easy reference. Today, we will be presenting some highlights of the Envision San Jose 2040 General Plan Annual Performance Review Report for fiscal year 2023-24. This annual performance review is mandated by state law and by general plan policy. Past land use patterns have resulted in a predominance of low-density, single-family residential uses in the city. Forty-three percent of the city's total land area and ninety-four percent of land designated for residential uses are single-family residential uses, as shown in the map on the right in yellow. Compared to this, only thirteen point five percent of land is job-generating employment land. These segregated land uses have resulted in fiscal, quality of life, and environmental impacts to San Jose. The goals, policies, and strategies of the Envision San Jose 2040 General Plan seeks to build a different future for the city. The General Plan sets forth a vision and a comprehensive roadmap to guide the city's continued growth through the year 2040. It contains twelve major strategies supported by goals, policies, and actions to achieve the vision of the General Plan. They guide the standards for city services, land use patterns, and the quality of life and development. A General Plan Annual Review Report is organized around these twelve major strategies, as well as a housing section, and is analyzed based mainly on data for the 2022, sorry, 2023-2024 fiscal year. For this evening's presentation, we are going to give an overview of each strategy and present a summary of implementation highlights from each strategy. David and I will be dividing the presentation. The strategies are presented non-sequentially to group strategies by similar topics. I will first cover strategies one, two, three, five, nine, twelve, and the housing section. David will cover strategies four, six, seven, eight, ten, and eleven. The community-based planning major strategy is a commitment to effectively engage all segments of the community in a meaningful planning process. Public outreach is implemented using the city's public outreach council policy six dash thirty. The pictured table shows the number of community meetings held by the Planning Division by fiscal year since fiscal year 2011-2012, which is the fiscal year that the San Jose General Plan was adopted. The majorities of meetings were held virtually, but meetings for large projects such as the Five Wounds Urban Village Plan, the Pleasant Hills Golf Course Redevelopment Project, and the Coyote Valley Corridor Study Incorporated in-person meetings. As on the table on the presentation, we can see for the last fiscal year in 2023-2024, though the number of community meetings were nearly the same as the prior fiscal year, there were significantly more attendees overall because the in-person meetings had significantly higher attendance than the virtual meetings. The form-based plan major strategy uses land use designations and general plan goals and policies to address the form, character, and densities for long-term development in the city. The strategy aims to maintain and create compatible and cohesive neighborhoods while allowing for flexibility within the land use designations. The design guidelines help the city facilitate growth, set expectations for high-quality site and building design, and maintain and enhance the character of its neighborhoods and communities. The pictured design renderings in the slides are just a few examples of some of the exemplary design. The focused growth major strategy focuses new residential and commercial growth capacity in specified identified growth areas, which are identified on the map on the right. The approach is meant to reduce environmental impacts, improve the city's fiscal health, and preserve established neighborhoods. Since fiscal year 2011-2012, eighty percent of residential development, eighty-six percent of commercial development, and seventy-seven percent of industrial development has occurred within these designated growth areas. In the last fiscal year 2023-2024, sixty-six percent of residential development, seventy-four percent of commercial development, and a hundred percent of the industrial development occurred in growth areas. Significant residential growth sometimes happens outside of growth areas because of the increasing number of ADUs that have been constructed since passage of state ADU laws. And ADUs can occur anywhere in the city, not just in growth areas. The pictured chart here shows the issuance of building permits citywide for all types of residential units since fiscal year 2011-2012. Since then, we have issued approximately thirty-four thousand six hundred building permits for housing units. This equates to an average production of two thousand six hundred and sixty-six dwelling units per year. As shown in the chart in blue, multifamily production fell significantly during COVID and stayed at lower levels until the 2023-2024 fiscal year, with nearly fifty percent more units issued than the prior fiscal year and nearing the average production level. As shown in the chart in green, single-family production increased to fifty-two units after a low of thirty-one units in the prior fiscal year. And as shown in the chart in orange, after a brief decline in ADU production in fiscal year 2022-23, after six years of year-over-year increases in ADU production, fiscal year 2023-24 had an increase in ADU productions over the prior fiscal year. Consistent with general plan policies on focusing growth since fiscal year 2011-2012, housing production has been fifty-six percent multifamily, five point five percent single-family, and eight point five percent ADUs. The pictured chart above shows the square footage of new non-residential building permits issued since fiscal year 2011-2012. Since then, we have issued approximately thirty-eight point two million square feet of non-residential square footage. This equates to an average production of approximately two point nine million square feet per year. As shown in the chart in red, after two strong fiscal years of commercial production in fiscal year 2019-2020 and 2020-2021, commercial production dropped significantly in fiscal year 21-22 and has continued to decline to nearly its lowest level since fiscal year 2011-2012, with six hundred and ninety-eight thousand square feet issued. As shown in the chart in gray, industrial production sharply declined in fiscal year 2021-22, but construction, production has continued to increase year-over-year with eight hundred and forty thousand square feet issued in fiscal year 23-24, which is getting close to the average production level of nine hundred and fifty-six thousand square feet. The urban villages' major strategy promotes the development of urban villages that are active, walkable, and transit-oriented mixed-use settings for new housing and job growth. In total, the General Plan identifies currently sixty-three urban village areas, which is shown in the map, in red on the map, and plans for approximately sixty-five thousand housing units and a hundred and sixteen thousand jobs. Since fiscal year 2011-2012, sixteen thousand six hundred and eighty-five residential units and six point one nine million square feet of non-residential space has been entitled in urban villages. In the prior fiscal year 2023-24, one thousand three hundred and sixty-one residential units and a hundred and ninety-one thousand square feet of non-residential space has been entitled in urban villages. Since the adoption of the General Plan, sixteen urban village plans have been adopted by city council, though there were no urban village plans that were completed in this last fiscal year. But the Five Wounds Urban Village Plan, which is an update of four previously approved urban village plans for the Five Wounds, Twenty-Fourth Street and William Street, Little Portugal, and Roosevelt Park Urban Village Plans, is anticipated to be completed in spring of 2025. In addition, the Saratoga Urban Village Plan and the East Side Alum Rock Urban Village Plan started the urban village planning process this summer and is anticipated to be completed in the spring of 2026. The South Deansa Boulevard and South Bascom South Urban Villages are the next areas that are under consideration to go through the urban village planning process. To support housing production before adoption of an urban village plan, the General Plan has a policy allowing signature projects, which lets mixed-use residential projects of exemplary nature to move forward ahead of an adopted urban village plan if it meets certain criteria and clearly advances the strategies of the urban village plan. In total, there have been nine signature projects submitted. The SPARDA Student Housing Signature Project on Tenth and Santa Clara, as well as the residential portion and one of three commercial buildings for the Orchard Signature Project on North Capitol Avenue have been completed. The Bascom Station Signature Project on South Bascom and Southwest Expressway is currently under construction and is close to completion. But the Volar Signature Project on Winchester Boulevard did expire in this last fiscal year. There's also a general plan policy that allows for a hundred percent affordable housing to move forward ahead of an adopted urban village plan. The Affirmed Affordable Housing Project on South Bascom Road and the Blossom Hill Senior Affordable Housing Project on Blossom Hill Road have completed construction. There are five other a hundred percent affordable housing projects that are currently under construction. The Destination Downtown Major Strategy supports continued growth of the downtown area as the city's cultural center and as an important employment and residential neighborhood. Consistent with this, the General Plan plans for twenty-eight thousand residential units and a hundred and six thousand jobs in downtown. Since fiscal year 2011-2012, twelve thousand eight hundred and ninety-two residential units and twenty-two point two six million square feet of non-residential space have been entitled in downtown. In the prior fiscal year 2023-2024, nine hundred and twenty-five residential uses and twenty thousand square feet of non-residential space was entitled in downtown. In the last fiscal year, the vacancy rate in downtown, office vacancy rate in downtown slightly increased from thirty percent to thirty-one percent. The commercial vacancy rate significantly declined after the adoption of the General Plan in 2011, from a high of twenty-three percent vacancy rate to a low of twelve percent in fiscal year 2016-2017, and then steadily rose until the COVID-nineteen pandemic, which caused the vacancy rate to jump back to over twenty percent. And then in fiscal year 2022-2023, the vacancy rate significantly increased to thirty percent with the completion of the Two Hundred Park Avenue Office Tower, which completed construction without a tenant. The downtown is also a cultural center for the city where many events are held. In fiscal year 2023-2024, there were eighty-four events in downtown with over two point five million attendees. After several years of no or few events because of COVID, attendance has returned and surpassed pre-COVID levels of attendance. The periodic major review strategy establishes the four-year review cycle, which provides an opportunity for the city to evaluate changes in planning context and the city achievements of city goals, or key goals. The city completed its latest four-year review process in December of 2021. The next general plan four-year review is anticipated to begin in 2026 to prepare for the seventh cycle housing element. Currently, the General Plan Team is undergoing review for the tri-elements update. This includes the update of the open space and safety elements of the General Plan and the creation of a new environmental justice element. These updates and the new elements are required by California state law and are anticipated to be completed in January first, 2026. The safety element will incorporate new safety standards, risk assessment, and emergency preparedness measures. The open space element will address equitable access to open space, climate resilience, and rewilding opportunities. And the new environmental justice element will address public health risks and environmental justice concerns for those living in disadvantaged communities and outlines strategies to promote environmental justice and community empowerment. The city also holds one general plan amendment hearing cycle for privately-initiated general plan amendments at the end of the year, but there are, there were no privately-initiated amendments for this year's hearing cycle. Although the housing section is not a major strategy in the General Plan, it is intertwined with many other strategies. The sixth cycle housing element contains a work plan to achieve the goals of the housing element. The Housing Catalyst Team, an interdepartmental group, meets bi-weekly to coordinate the implementation of the Housing Catalyst Work Plan items. The work plan contains the housing element work plan items that are currently underway or that staff anticipate initiated in the next two years. A key tool for tracking this progress is the Housing Work Plan Dashboard, which is pictured on the slides, which visualizes the status of the strategies and policies. The dashboard is updated semi-anally and helps the public stay informed. Some of the key initiatives that were completed in 2024 was updating the emergency urgency shelters, as well as permitting the sale of accessory dwelling units as condominiums to make homeownership more accessible, and the rezoning of fifty-six mobile home parks to ensure their preservation. Housing production data is reported on an annual basis and will be available in March of 2024, or sorry, in March of 2025 for the 2024 calendar year. The Planning Division Housing Team is looking into scheduling a study session with Planning Commission in March of 2025 before submitting the Housing Element Annual Report to HCD. And I will pass it now over to David.
Thank you Laura. The remaining strategies that I will be presenting will focus on San Jose's fiscal health, public services, and facilities the city provided in the last fiscal year. As it relates to growth, I will give an update on changes in the city's population and development activity. The Innovation Regional Employment Center Strategy emphasizes economic development to support San Jose's growth as a center of innovation and regional employment. The General Plan advances the strategy by planning for three hundred and eighty-two thousand new jobs and a jobs-to-employed resident ratio of one point one to one, supporting job growth within existing job centers and adding new employment lands and designating job centers at regional transit stations. Since adoption of the General Plan in 2011, the city's population continued to increase until it peaked in 2020 with a population of one million forty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-seven, but the population has declined the last three years to a population of nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand four ninety-one. The decline has slowed over the last three years. Therefore, the city has only grown by about five hundred and twenty-one since 2011, which is less than a point one percent increase. This decrease in population was after several years of an essential flattening of the population. The continued high cost of living may be leading to more outmigration exacerbated by the pandemic and the high availability of remote work, particularly in the tech sector. You can see the number of jobs occupied on the right column on the left-hand side. Between 2012 and 2023, San Jose has attained roughly twenty-eight thousand new jobs, which is about two thousand five hundred and forty-five jobs annually, and added approximately fifty thousand eight hundred employed residents. As shown in Table four on the bottom, San Jose remains the city with the lowest jobs-per-employed resident ratio from surrounding cities and the only city under a point, one point oh ratio. The data reinforces the importance of the General Plan's job focus and the need to maintain employment lands for future job growth. Strategy six is streetscapes for people emphasizing a human-centered street network, supporting a more equitable, sustainable, economically dynamic, dense, and transit-oriented city. Goals and policies of the General Plan encourage the development of complete communities where residents can walk or bike and have access to parks and trails. The Department of Transportation led efforts in the past few years for the approval of several transportation plans, which move forward complete street principles. These include Vision Zero Action Plan, Better Bike Plan 2025, N-Moviento, or the East San Jose Multimodal Transportation Improvement Plan, Downtown Transportation Plan, West San Jose Multimodal Transportation Improvement Plan, and the Transit First Policy, which was in 2022. Better Bike Plan 2025 continues to build out of its network in all ten city council districts. These new bikeways and enhancements to existing bikeways projects leverage DOT's pavement and maintenance program. In fiscal year 2023-2024, the city installed seventeen point six miles of new on-street bikeways and upgraded five point three miles of existing on-street bikeways. Better Bike Plan 2025 defines a five-year priority project network to help guide planning efforts. Funding has not been identified for full implementation yet. Many of these corridors currently have basic and/or buffered bike lanes. The implementation status of the five-year priority project network is shown here. Major strategy seven of the General Plan aims to achieve ambitious environmental leadership goals by advancing its Climate Smart San Jose Plan through 2040. The measurable sustainability strategy recognizes the General Plan as a tool to minimize impacts on resource consumption, minimize contribution to global warming, and the preservation of natural environment as it relates to growth and development. Major initiatives to improve sustainability in 2024 included the Zero Emissions Neighborhood Pilot Program, the Electric Home San Jose Program, which is a comprehensive electrification upgrade program to support single-family and multifamily builders, San Jose Clean Energy Heat Pump Incentive, San Jose Clean Energy Efficiency Programs, and San Jose's Peak Rewards Programs. To further measure progress towards General Plan's goals, staff in the Environmental Service Department collects data annually on key environmental indicators for energy use, transportation, housing, and water use. Climate Smart San Jose aims to reduce greenhouse gas emissions below nineteen ninety levels. This graph for Climate Smart Greenhouse reductions through pathways and inventory, the graph provides a comparison between the Climate Smart's plant emission reduction pathway, the pathway to carbon neutrality in 2030, and San Jose's emission reduction progress so far. The orange dot is just Climate Smart's plant sectors only. Based on this data, San Jose is on track to meet its Climate Smart emissions reduction goals by 2050. However, these emissions are slightly higher than those required to achieve carbon neutrality by 2030. The fiscally-strong major strategy establishes land use goals and policies to promote a balance of revenue and cost to allow the city to improve delivery of municipal services. A key component of this strategy is to preserve employment lands as commercial development has the most beneficial impacts on the city's fiscal health and ability to provide services. Past land use patterns have resulted in a predominance of low-density, single-family residential uses in San Jose. Low-density sprawl results in disproportionate costs to the city due to high capital investments and ongoing operations and maintenance for infrastructure, serving fewer people and businesses than the city otherwise could in a higher-density-built environment. Key measures for determining the city's fiscal strength are the capital and operating budgets, including the Capital Improvement Program. For fiscal year 2023 to 24, the adopted budget totals six point one three billion for all city funds, which is about a half a percent more than last fiscal year. The city's general fund is the primary operating fund used to account for all revenues and expenditures of the city. In February of this year, the administration released the 2024 to 25 Manager's Budget Requests and the 25 to 29 Five-Year Forecast and Revenue Projections Document, which estimates budget condition of the general fund and selected capital funds over the next five years. The forecast initially anticipates an ongoing shortfall of three point six million for the next fiscal year. Life amidst abundant natural resources, this strategy promotes the city's natural environment and reinforcement of the urban growth boundary. The strategy also promotes building a world-class trail network and continuing to build parks for the city's residents. Twenty twenty-four highlights include dedication of five acres of new parkland, five new park openings, which include Highlandville Park, Mariposa Park, New Berry Park, Payne Avenue, Friendship Park, and Pallier Park. In addition to the nine existing parks, saw renovated amenities. Parks constructed three miles of new trails, along with hosting over fifty-seven Viva Park events and three Viva Cayenne Open Street events. In addition to parks and trails, PRNS provides many community services and neighborhood improvements. This includes bi-weekly garbage pickup service and assured cooperation with cleanliness standards at approximately two hundred active houseless encampment areas. The Beautify SJ Initiative aims to encourage neighborhood cleanup efforts, beautification projects, and neighborhood engagement opportunities. Beautify SJ has cleaned over seventeen million pounds of trash and removed over two point nine million square feet of graffiti from San Jose since its start. The design for a helpful community major strategy supports the physical health of the community by promoting walking, bicycling, and public transit. Together, Climate Smart, along with the Land Use and Transportation Chapter of the General Plan, sets long-range goals and policies that provide for a safe, efficient, and sustainable transportation network. General Plan Policy TR 1.3 calls for reducing the drive loans mode share to no more than forty-five percent by 2030 and no more than twenty-five percent by 2040, with goals to increase various other modes accordingly. As shown in the chart here, the city has increased its goals to decrease the reliance on single-car travelers and more reliance on alternative modes of transportation. Although we have not seen an increase in public transit users in the last five years, we are seeing an increase in more carpool and rusher participation. The city is still actively working to improve these numbers. Goals and policies of the General Plan encourage development of complete communities where residents can walk or bike and have access to parks and trails. Vision Zero is a nationwide program adopted by the city in 2015. The goal of Vision Zero is to reduce and eventually eliminate traffic deaths and severe injuries. Building on the General Plan and Climate Smart goals, in 2040, Vision Zero worked towards the goals and strategies by providing complete street improvements, including high-visibility crosswalks, traffic signal retiming, hardware modifications, radar speed signs, and adding buffered protected bike lanes. The Slow Down and Distracted Driving Campaign provided communication media with a wide range of communication from billboards to digital displays. Since May 2023, it has generated over twenty-two million impressions, effectively reaching and engaging a broad audience. The Community Forest Management Plan, which is the city's forestry program, planted over two thousand trees in the last fiscal year. An ongoing planning of one thousand street trees annually will be provided along with pruning all existing street trees and planting and maintaining trees in parks. An ongoing planning of one thousand street trees annually will be provided along with pruning all existing street trees and planting and maintaining trees in parks. Our Department of Transportation, along with Parks and Recreation, also helps build and maintain our trail systems. The city's trail network to date has built out sixty-four point nine miles of off-street trails. The city has a goal to provide a hundred miles of off-street trails designated for use by pedestrians, cyclists, and other non-motor vehicles. The map here shows the major trails such as Coyote Creek and Los Gatos Creek. Completion of the extensions and connections of these trails are expected to be completed by the end of two thousand and twenty-five. This concludes our staff's presentation. Thank you, commissioners, for listening in to us providing you with part of support of how the city is progressing this year with the general plan goals and major strategies. We are now available for any questions or comments. We also have staff from our Housing and Parks teams to help with more specific questions. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Uh, do we have anyone with questions?
I do have a couple. Um, the first question is the housing dot San Jose C U dot go uh, that was referenced. Do we have any information on adoption rate or number of hits on that site? Or how we're directing traffic to it? I- I'm I'm trying to understand if it's being utilized, if it was an effective use of time and money and if there's something we can do to help derive that adoption. This was specifically for renting.
I just want to clarify, is this the the one you're talking about?
That is the one I'm thinking about.
So we have Michelle, um, from our housing team that is going to answer that for us.
No? Um, so we don't have data. Um, we haven't looked at how this is being used. It is our new housing catalyst page that was moved over from the housing from the S J Economy page. Um, but we can look into how it's being used.
I would love to understand just if we're actually driving people to the page and if there are any things that we can do uh, to help make sure people can find affordable housing.
Um, so the what this dashboard is, is these are the items and programs that were listed in our housing element, and it provides updates on how we're making progress to those. So it's not on our affordable housing units.
But it is on on whether we're driving people to go and look at housing information and availability in San Jose. And I have one more question, um, and it's about the transit numbers. Um, that that last slide definitely showed we're not really having a a great impact on pushing people toward public transit, even though we've built a new, uh, center of transit and we've we've uh, expanded BART and I I'm just wondering if there's some more information that that can help us understand why these things that we're doing aren't actually driving people to use other modes of of transportation. If anybody has any insights on that.
So, um, we have, um, Wilson Tam who is, um, from the DOT, but he's not here today. But he's on Teams and he's watching us, and he's going to give me a response that I'll be passing along. So give me a few minutes to give you that response.
Sure, yeah, I just, uh, all of the effort that we've made, uh, between two thousand and nineteen and now in transit seems to have not gone in the right direction.
So one of the reasons he mentions is that we just passed the pandemic. So it's so it's we're just making our way, but that is one of the reasons.
Can that be repeated? What was passed?
We're just past the pandemic. So the numbers went down during the pandemic.
I also have a s- a quick question on this slide. I noticed that, uh, the walk mode share in particular seemed to be very kind of spiky. Uh, and it looks like there were different data sources kind of underpinning these numbers. Are there plans to kind of standardize so that year to year the data is more comparable?
Um, I think it was the same source, but I'll I'll let Wilson, you know, chime in on that to to verify that, but I think that um, you know, a lot of this is, you know, sampling data for a lot of these things. So sometimes it could just be sampling error that kind of spikes things up and down. Like, that happens a lot with data stuff because it's not a direct measure of that, but yeah, I'll leave, uh, for Wilson to kind of maybe chime in on that. It looks like he has some other information.
Yes, and I'm sorry, this is a little bit lagging. The answer is lagging, but so he is mentioning about the first question that you had that after the council passed the Transit First Policy, we are making efforts to improve transit just as, um, building transit lanes, better bus stops, et cetera. So I guess the point is that after pandemic things, you know, were not working out well, but now we are going to see a rise based on all these other plans that they are working on.
Do do we have things like ridership numbers and can can we actually show that something is improving or or that it's not?
All right. He's going to answer that question. Oh, he specifically gives examples of the streets that are, um, King Road, um, Santa Clara Street, Stevens Creek Boulevard, where they are planning to improve transit.
A lot of transit too is obviously through V T A, so we have to coordinate more, you know, we do maybe public improvements in the streets, but like the routes and anything like that would have to be through V T A, but we can definitely look into that information and try and provide some of that to find out. But, um, yeah, I mean, transit is down everywhere, you know, the the hybrid work models, the remote work is still lingering from COVID, so I think that really affects a lot of the transit use in the areas. Just so many more people are working. I mean, even here in the city, we're hybrid, right? So, you know, not everybody's using transit all the time, so it's going to probably suppress that. And maybe that's a long-term trend and maybe it's a short-term trend. It's kind of something we have to wait out to see if that will make a difference.
It's just an interesting thought. How much do you invest in improving transit if people aren't using it?
Um, I do have some summary response on the mode shift data. So that data came from American Community Surveys, and DOT has just completed an R F P to purchase big data, which will give them give us the city more complex data sets in future reports. Um, and B T A does have public data on ridership trends, and we can report ridership data in future reporting, so we can bring that to you in the future.
Thank you. And following up on my previous question, I was just looking at the footnote for two thousand and twenty-two in particular, and there was a note in the report that it was based on location data as opposed to census data like two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty-three. So that was, I think, potentially some of the source of making the numbers not as comparable from year to year. I also wanted to follow up on the transit ridership. I think that it is a little bit hard to maybe measure the impacts of individual investments, just given the scale of the investments relative to, you know, the population of the city, number of, you know, people actively moving about every day. But I think if you look at a more project-by-project basis, I know the uh, electrification of Caltrain recently completed, and I read that, you know, their ridership has now surpassed pre-pandemic levels. So I think you can get a little bit better signal-to-noise ratio if you look project by project.
Yeah, I also just jump on that point. Um, I mean, really, the city's only been prioritizing uh, transport and development since two thousand and fourteen or so, and, you know, buildings last for a long time. The built environment changes over the course of decades, takes a long time to respond to policy, and so you know, people's use of transit is really heavily influenced by the environment around them, so I I I think that that's how I view the question that you're asking.
I I'm just thinking about there are, uh, there have been a lot of significant investments in the city on transit over the last decade. There are more to come. I just would like to make sure, make sure that we are looking at it in a forward-looking way. What is the trend? What actually did happen when we did this thing, this thing, this thing? And those correlations, I think, will tell a story over time.
So the Transit First Policies, Wilson mentions again that the Transit First Policy that has been adopted gives them a lot of opportunities and um, a lot of leeway to authority to prioritize investments on transit, um, even if the ridership numbers improve slowly, so he mentions that.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'd like to just compliment the staff, first of all, on the quality of the report. It's beautiful. Um, very readable, um, not a lot of jargon, you know, it's very well done, so thank you. And I and and to all the city staff, because I I know that, uh, all the departments contribute to that, so thank you. Um, I was wondering, could you bring up slide, um, eight? I have a question on that one. So, uh, this is really interesting to me because the commercial total has really dropped significantly since two thousand and twenty-one, but the industrial con- uh, construction is up, which is good. Um, and so my question is, is the drop in commercial construction basically because people aren't building office because of the hybrid work?
Yeah, I think I I wasn't here in the two thousand and nineteen, twenty twenty, or two thousand and twenty, twenty-one year, but I have kind of reviewed some of that as part of this work. Um, and yeah, a lot of that was, like, the significant portion of the commercial is office. Um, and yeah, we just are not seeing any office development going through, um, nothing even in like the planning review stage. Um, a lot of that has to do with the office vacancy rate being really high. There's already, you know, a lot of available open space. So and some projects have actually paused. Um, there's like the one eighty Park Avenue one had started demo, but then they paused some of their their work. There was also one on Julian Street, so, you know, there's just not the demand for office right now. So I think what we saw in the two thousand and nineteen, twenty, and two thousand and twenty, twenty-one is like people that already started sort of that process before COVID happened, but I think, you know, so it kind of was good for a few years and then like nobody really started after that. And maybe with the interest rates, it just, you know, doesn't pencil out the same, so. Um, you know, we are seeing some developments here and there. Um, there is still a high demand for industrials. Oh, and we do have several other projects that are still sort of in the works, and there's some bigger ones. Um, I think they're mostly in the Almond Valley area, but, um, yeah, so we are still seeing demand for, um, industrial, but basically the return to office stuff, you know, or hybrid working, remote working has just really killed the demand for office. And that usually is the main driver of the commercial side.
That makes sense, and and it's encouraging to see that our industrial, uh, uh, construction is increasing. That's that's good. Um, would you be able to bring up slide eleven on the downtown? So I'm wondering, uh, how much of the uh, the bullet point plans for twenty-eight thousand new housing units and her six thousand new jobs? Do we know how much of that is Google and where Google is if they've given any update to the city on their project?
So the twenty-eight thousand is just what the general plan envisions overall. Um, but out of like the entitlements that have gone since two thousand and eleven, um, I believe like five million, I think, is the amount of non-residential square footage that's associated just with Google. And I think there's about five thousand units that were entitled for the Google project in downtown, so you know, that's it's still a significant portion of the residential units and maybe not so much for the the non-residential square footage, but still, you know, a decent portion of of it, but um, I, as far as I know, the last of it is like that they haven't brought in any plans to start the process. Um, they would need to submit planning permits, um, to they have like a master, um, P D permit, which i- is not specific, so that there's other things that they still need to do, and they haven't come in with any of those yet. So I think the last I've heard is like they still plan on it, but like not right now, so. And there that entitlement is actually entitled until like two thousand and fifty-one, I believe. They have like a really long entitlement on that, so they have a lot of time to be able to. They don't have to come in and get it re-entitled, so. But yeah, as far as we know, like, nothing in the works yet on it.
Okay, great. Uh, my last question is, um, could you bring up slide nineteen? This is on the clean energy. Um, this slide is very confusing to me. I I I don't understand. I mean, I understand the business as usual, but the other t- and the carbon path, carbon neutral, but where where are we? Like, where on the slide is where we're actually at or how we're trending?
So this graph is showing our greenhouse gas emissions. The the dark blue line is business as usual is means if we're not doing anything, that would be the trend that we would be taking. Um, Climate Smart Plan Path, um, is more of a broader, uh, federal plan that's trying to reduce, um, greenhouse gas emissions. And then the blue line is carbon neutral, which is more, uh, another, uh, I believe it's either state or federal program that aims to be carbon neutral by two thousand and thirty. And the orange dots is Climate Smart, which is the city's plans and how it's, we've been measuring it and where we are for each particular year. So looking at, you should be focusing on orange dots, which shows our progress, which is following the trend of the blue line to be carbon neutral by two thousand and thirty.
So the are the orange dots the the direction we're heading in with our current program?
Yes.
Great, okay.
Great, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. I would also like to echo your report. Thank you for making it clear and definitely something that if uh, is this being recorded through through Zoom? Yeah, okay, good. So something for us to go back to or or the community if they just want everything in a nice little half-an-hour snapshot. Um, this, uh, could we go to slide twenty-three again? Right, okay. So here, um, aside from transit and walking and biking, is there other health indicators, like community health indicators? Because I'm thinking access to parks, access to healthcare, um, what we do here in terms of, um, even liquor licenses and maybe overlaying that with with police reports of DUIs, domestic violence. I'm thinking this, um, priority has range in terms of what we're capturing and how we measure a healthful community, and I just wonder beyond this, are there other variables being looked at, and if not, how do we expand the definition of a healthful community?
Uh, so I will say that I I don't know that like in our current report, we have been looking at that data, but as part of the new environmental justice element that our our team is working on, are going to look at a lot of those things. So a lot of the things it specifically wants us to look at is like access to public facilities, access to healthy food, um, the ways to encourage physical develop, uh, physical activity. So a lot of those are things that we are currently working on to try and address, and it'll be through this new element. And they often are, um, we have like an integrated general plan, so it'll kind of be, you know, interspersed throughout, so it'll also address, you know, this major strategy in a more comprehensive way.
Um, one recommendation is to possibly, um, I don't know if these are just the five rows that we're tracking currently, but if it could be expanded to twenty rows and and maybe start to include some of the things that are in the um, near future that are going to be tracked, so then that way like the community or people looking at the reports begin to see, oh, look, there is a plan to track, um, access to healthy foods, um, access to public transportation stops, access, well, I mean, it's up there, but access to parks, access to, um, or just indicators in terms of, um, just other things and just to give the community some reassurance that beyond these five, that there's other indicators that we're going to be looking forward to just getting more information on. I just
Yeah.
put that out there as a recommendation. Thank you.
But also DOT's Move San Jose Plan has a city wa- is a trans- trans- citywide transportation plan that has access to parks and other destinations captured in it. So they are already working on it. It was adopted in two thousand and twenty-two, and they have developed a tool to track, um, access to parks and other destinations. And there are other key performance indicators as well in that plan. Um, and they are developing a tool to track twenty-seven indicators, including access to destinations and others.
Could could we know what those twenty-seven indicators are? Because I'm thinking about, as you're talking, I'm thinking about things like uh, farmers' markets and, you know, where they are and how people have access to them and healthcare and, you know, how far people have to go for emergency service or things like that. Like, there's a lot in healthful communities, to your point.
True. Let me see if I can Google that plan. Um, okay, access to
Well, this particular strategy is only looking at transportation, but yeah, Laura talked about our new environmental justice uh, element that we'll be working on.
But yeah, Laura talked about our new environmental justice element that we'll be working on, which is still in the very early stages. We'll be doing outreach early next year to get more community feedback. And for our environmental justice element, we'll be looking at a lot of different categories, including distance farmers markets, grocery stores.
So you're saying this is designed for healthful communities? Is it really about healthful communities? It's about transportation? Is that what you said?
Yes, this strategy in particular, or this section of the strategy in particular, just for transportation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So, interesting. Is there a way to expand the definition of number 11 beyond transportation? Or would it? I'm just kind of thinking if it's another report, if it may, it may be referenced here to look at that report, but it's just great to have it all in one place.
I think, again, because we're kind of in the early stages of the environmental justice element, because it isn't, we have an integrated general plan where it's like not everything's, you know, compartmentalized as this is only the element here. A lot of those policies that'll address that will be throughout the general plan. So that will in and of itself sort of expand Measure 11. Or it may be that we may add an additional strategy and that will report just on those specifically. But a lot of what we have for these strategies are based what's in the general plan now. So this has sort of been the focus of it so far. But we're definitely working on expanding it. We would, you know, that's something that we would like to include on there. And it looks like Ruth might want to add.
I would add, another opportunity to relook at this strategy will be the general plan four-year review, which is coming along in early, mid 2026. We get direction from the city council. There's some criteria that we have to look at and it's in the general plan. I can't think of it off the top of my head besides looking at housing or jobs. But the city council also gives us a scope of work to look at. And it's possible they can, you know, if folks talk to them or we can present this, that we can expand on what we mean or what we look at when we talk about this strategy.
Perfect, thank you. Look forward to that.
I have one more question. Forgive me, my phone died right in the middle of this, so I don't know what slide number it is. But it's the one that compares cities and their per.
This one?
That one. So last year, I think I asked the same question. The numbers are roughly the same and we don't seem to be able to move the needle on jobs per employed residence. I'm assuming that's because we're not, we haven't been able to add enough jobs in the city to keep people in the city to work that actually live here.
So the report, details in the report, there are some details about how like in the last three, four years, the numbers keep going up and down, like sometimes the job numbers going down by the population going, you know, the other way. Or, you know, it just keeps switching. And that kind of ends up resulting in those numbers. But yes, overall, there is, your point is correct. But that's where these little fluctuations are coming due to both the jobs and population changing on a regular basis.
I sort of expected this number to move as people moved out of San Jose. Because our housing number is, I mean, the number of people who live here is going down. But it also seems to indicate that the number of jobs and businesses are going down in a comparable way rate in order to maintain that number. I just want to make sure I have that right in my head, that this metric is telling a story of both reduced people living in the city and reduced businesses in the city. And that's what's keeping it roughly the same. Does that, does that sound accurate?
I'm just looking for the right, exact numbers. But what I was looking at earlier is that the numbers are not always exactly the same. Like, not everything is going down. Let me see.
Yeah, I'll also mention that like a lot of the job losses are sort of not like San Jose specific stuff. Like, obviously, we lost a lot of jobs in 2020 because of COVID, which happened everywhere. And then in the last couple of years, we've also seen a rise in tech layoffs. You know, and that's not just in San Jose, that's in San Francisco, that's in, you know, Oakland. So it's not like it's something I would say necessarily the city itself is doing wrong. It's just like global trends and, you know, job loss.
I'm not suggesting it is some, I'm just, I'm, I, whenever, every year, when I look at this number and I think about the fact that the number of people who live here is going down, you would sort of expect that if we were increasing jobs, if any of our businesses were increasing jobs, that this number would get better. And it's not.
So, you know, for example, in 2022, there was a gain of 4,900 jobs. But the ratio still fell to 0.79 because addition of 14,900 employed residents. So although there was a gain, you know, there was other reasons why the number is still not, you know, where we want it to be. And then I think this 22, 23, between those two, 18,000 jobs were lost and 16,800 employed residents were lost. And that so brings us down to 0.79. So there are like all those little nuanced numbers, which is, but overall job numbers, I think, didn't we say that somewhere, that total number of jobs? Between 2012 and 2023, city has attained roughly 28,000 new jobs and added approximately 50,800. So it seems like there's a total net positive numbers. But there is some play with the actual ratio.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And also just another component of that that I think we discussed last time, we had a discussion about this ratio. When people work remote, generally, the tax revenue goes to wherever their employer is based. So I would imagine that has an impact too, that people can commute a lot further to other jurisdictions when they're working remote for at least, or at least their tax dollars are commuting.
I had one question on this slide as well. Looking at Fremont, it looks like they've been able to make meaningful movement on this ratio in a way that San Jose has not necessarily been able to do so. Do you know if the city's done any kind of comparative analysis of what strategies may have worked well in some of these other cities?
No, unfortunately, I do not know that. I'm sorry.
They probably reached out to like OED, maybe they have some further information on this. But yeah, it's not something that the planning department tracks.
Sounds good, thank you. I want to be cognizant of time here. Are there any other questions from members of the commission before we break for dinner? All right, well, thank you, staff, for the amazing report again and all of the hard work that went into this. We will be adjourning until 6:30 when we will reconvene in the council chambers for our normal session. Thank you, everyone.